Okay, welcome everyone. I, Council President Walsh, call the May 22nd Special Committee Meeting of the Whole Order, or Meeting of the Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order at 7:20 PM. There are multiple opportunities for public comment at tonight's meeting. The first is a general public comment opportunity at the beginning of the meeting, or you can make comments after the presentation and council question and answer period on the two agenda items on the meeting tonight. On that item, we have two items we are going to address. ID 1431, which is Affordable Housing Goals for Future Capital Investment, and ID 1343, Discussing Police, Court, and City Hall Planning: Future Options and Funding. So, for our first order of business, public comment, members of the public can address council at this time in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, you can press star three if you're on the phone, or if you join by computer or smartphone, you're going to look for your hand icon, or send the host a chat message. And if you're in the room and didn't sign up, I'll ask for other speakers before closing this portion of the meeting. So, we're going to wait a moment, see if anyone wishes to raise their hand. Clerk, did we have anyone sign up to speak?
Council President, no one signed up on the sign-in sheet, but I know that we have several members of the public in the room, and we also have a member of the public online who would like to address the committee.
Okay, so if there's a member online that's already raised their hand, I will let them go. I will definitely ask for options. So, let's, I am going to read over our items. So, "Public comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Please direct comments to the whole city council and not individuals. While this is not a question and answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. When recognized, please unmute your microphone for virtual attendees, or step up the lectern up here, and you're going to press the button until it turns red. State your name, address, and relationship to city. Speak clearly and pause frequently, and limit your comments to five minutes. If you're attending virtually and do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will need to proceed. You're encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior will not be permitted." So, Clerk, can you identify the first person who signed up to speak?
Council President Brian R. is online. Brian, I'm making you a panelist. You should see the option to unmute and turn on your video.
I believe you're still muted on your side?
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, thanks.
Great, thank you. I apologize, I'm not too prepared. I presented or gave comment last month as well. I'm part of the ownership and development group that owns the Red Robin in Pickering Place, and part of that Centralist Squad Plan, and we've been evaluating and investigating for the past year of how we can get, move forward on a potential for mixed-use multifamily on that site within Pickering Place per your development objectives. And we asked a question with the Economic Development Director, as well as your group as well, as if we could get into this pioneer project designation or status, because we really need some relief on various areas to make the project viable. The question was subsequently asked about, I guess in specificity, about, you know, structured impact costs, as well as the IC zoning classification. Just to give and reiterate more detail on it, the impact of structured parking is very significant, obviously. Rents, I guess, I'll kind of go through the whole thing, and it doesn't make this viable at current time. Rents in Issaquah are lower than other urban communities, like, for example, for Bellevue, which is why you see more garden-style type apartments without structured parking. Rents are about a dollar a square foot or more less than those other areas where we're building TOD projects at these various stations. And also, when you layer in the inclusionary housing, without tax abatements, meaning without an MFT program, it moves it into the completely unviable area. And so, the parameters that we spoke about last month was, in the other markets that we're in, and along the Bell-Red corridor out to Redmond, all those projects are being developed at 80% AMI, some at 10%, there's a few of them at 20%, and a majority of those have MFT, some of those you can pay in lieu of as well to make them more viable. So, in today's, I guess in summary, in today's market, that, you know, we need to be at least competitive to where those are. And again, the backdrop, aside from all the inclusionary zoning aspect, which, if we drop below 80%, makes it unviable, but we're also fighting against, we're a dollar a square foot under. So, we're at a point where we're looking to say, can we move this forward? We're trying to attract capital as it, and everybody does their due diligence, and they're seeing these deficits that we're trying to make up to make this work. And so, that, in a long story short, is why we're asking for, you know, what could be, what aspects could be put into this to make this quote-unquote pencil has been purported, and we're happy to share development performance. And again, as a backdrop or recap from last month, we have, in the last decade, done 29 TOD sites in Seattle, and Bellevue, and Redmond, and have several under construction currently, have a few stalled because of the current interest rate dilemma, but that's even outside of this discussion. We hope that all gets worked out in the next two, three years. And again, I think we really want to ask for, could we be in this pioneer project status? And what does that entail? And we could share with you, be transparent with you about the numbers, both comparatively what other projects are that are able to move forward, and where this site and being in Issaquah itself sits. So, happy to move that discussion forward, and happy to be transparent, but just very curious about this program. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. And I'll give everybody in the audience, anybody interested in making comments at So, you can, yeah, if you would like to come, you can open up, state your name, and all of that. That would be great.
Hello, I'm Rachel Wright. I'm co-chair of the Issaquah Arts Commission, and a member of the Creative District Advisory Board. Tonight, I'm joined by two colleagues from the Advisory Board, Juliette and Leslie. We understand that the city is looking at space requirements for our growing community in Issaquah. We are not here tonight with a specific ask. We are here to plant a few seeds to help get people thinking about the reality of our creative community today. And, we want to share an emerging vision for a creative hub in Issaquah. We envision a vibrant place where people come together as a community to create, learn, and share experiences. At the Arts Commission, and through the Creative District Advisory Board, we are listening to the needs of the community. I've spoken with the council before regarding the Art Commission grant requests and the need for space. In our last round of grant-making, more than half the applicants plan to use the funds to pay for renting a space. In 2019, as Issaquah was preparing to become a creative district, we asked the community for input on the kinds of amenities that they would like to see. Over 500 ideas were submitted, and themes surrounding the need for creative space emerged in the form of ideas for artist studios, galleries, and a community art space. In 2022, we conducted three focus groups, structured to capture feedback from arts educators, emerging artists, and practicing artists. Across these groups, we heard the need for classes and activities that support personal and career development in the arts, and promote creativity as a part of personal well-being. There is a need to build and strengthen our creative community. Participants expressed the need for cultivating and promoting creative resources that can connect makers, educators, and spectators in Issaquah. Alongside all this, there is the underlying need for space, an approachable and affordable place to create, gather, and network, and quite simply, a place in our community to go and be inspired. We are looking at these needs through the lens of a creative hub. And when we look around Issaquah and its creative district, although we are anchored by Village Theater, and we have a strong range of businesses that provide music lessons, we can see that foundational pieces for the visual arts and creative economy are missing. Where are the art galleries and artist studios? Where is the Community Center for Exhibitions, Classes, and Events? We are planning, and we are partnering. This means identifying short-term opportunities while setting a foundation for a long-term home for the arts in Issaquah. Short-term, we are getting a better understanding of available city-owned spaces, if they can be used, and how. As part of this research, we'll be running a few classes through the Parks Department for real-world feedback from instructors and participants. We are also piloting the creation of gallery spaces with and within existing businesses in Issaquah. Finally, the Arts Commission recently formed a committee to identify and study available spaces that can be rented and revamped for art-making, artist studios, and hosting creative events. Our aim is to provide a proposal on the steps and resources needed to establish and open a new creative hub in Issaquah. We look forward to updating you on our progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Does anybody else want to speak? Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Juliette Ripley-Dunkelberger, and I'm a resident of the city of Issaquah in South Cove. I am also a practicing professional artist, a teaching artist. I instruct ceramics at the Kirkland Art Center. I'm a member of the Creative District Advisory Board. I'm the president of the Columbia City Gallery in Seattle. I'm a creativity researcher, and I was an instructor at Art East before they left, and a previous member of the Issaquah Philharmonic. So, I've been involved in the visual arts and music in Issaquah since we moved here in 1995 or so. So, I'd like to share some of my experiences as an instructor, and an artist, and a musician. As a ceramics instructor at Kirkland Art Center, I have students from throughout the region. A number of my students come from Woodby Island, one from La Conner, Auburn, Snohomish, North Bend, so it's a pretty broad spectrum of people that they're drawing from. They all come for pretty much the same reason. We have robust programs with really good instruction, thank you, and the inspiration and camaraderie that they find within those communities is really, really rewarding. So, the Kirkland Art Center serves over 400 or 540 students with about 45 courses, and it kind of ebbs and flows, but that's about the average for per quarter, and also offers open studio times. Many of the courses since about 2016 have been filling within the first day of registration, and then have waiting lists for each quarter. So, there's plenty of space for more art centers in the area. The experience that most students have coming into a classroom and getting to work with an instructor, and simply get better at their craft, most of them I see, well, no matter what kind of day they're having when they walk in, they feel better when they leave. One of the things that they're learning is creative efficacy, meaning that they are learning how to come up with options for problems, and search for ways to develop solutions. And whether you're working in the visual arts, music, or you're an engineer or a doctor, those are super, super important skills. So, the arts actually teach us a lot of things way beyond learning how to paint properly or throw on the wheel. There was a recent cross-cultural study that I found that came out in 2021 that looked at 1,400 office workers throughout the pandemic, from the US, from Germany, and from China. And they found that those that participated in creative endeavors over the course of the pandemic ended up developing greater creative efficacy. They felt better about their ability to actually go out and change their environment or solve problems, and they also felt more connected socially. And that's one of the things that our communities are really in desperate need of right now. So, Kirkland Art Center supported that need by dedicated spaces to mediums, which require single-use spaces. There are a lot of mediums, meaning paint, or crayon, or chalk, or whatever, that you can use a flexible space for. You could have multiple different kinds of classes in one space. And then there are mediums where they don't play well with others, unfortunately. As a ceramics instructor, I practiced one of those ceramics. It gets dusty, it kind of makes a mess. So, we can't do glass fusing in the same space where we would teach ceramics. Having those dedicated spaces has allowed the Kirkland Art Center to really develop a robust program in printmaking and in ceramics. That requires space for equipment, like, and big equipment, kilns, wheels, large printing presses, as well as spaces for specific messes, which are hard to clean. I think as an instructor at Art East, and as someone who, in the last couple of years, was on their education committee, one of the main reasons why we struggled educationally is because we had a single classroom. It was fantastic multi-use, oh my gosh, I got so many different things going on in there, it was really exciting. However, every single time we taught, you had to take the classroom down and clean it from floor to ceiling. And because of that, students couldn't have long-term projects going on, they couldn't come in in between classes and work on projects. It meant that we were in a position of only teaching beginners and people that wanted to dabble. We were not able to actually teach people at mid or end of their practice. So, those people went to the Kirkland Art Center.
So, if you could just summarize at this point?
Absolutely. So, as someone who sells in galleries and shows, space has also been an issue. I now have a, you know, work with a gallery in Seattle. And as a musician in the Issaquah Philharmonic, we have not been able to find space for quite a long time to rehearse or perform in the city of Issaquah, despite the name of the Philharmonic. So, as a professional who lives in the city of Issaquah, I can't practice my profession in this city, and it's really frustrating. So, I would love, as we're working with this committee, to be able to continue to find spaces for us to work.
Thank you, Juliette.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Leslie, thanks.
And I am Leslie Moore Flug. I was on the Issaquah Arts Commission for five years, and I'm currently in my fifth year of working with the Creative District. I retired from Green River College as the dean for branch campuses, and had a significant role in the development of three branch campuses over my 25 years there. The city of Issaquah has shown its commitment to the arts in a number of ways, from the development of a large public art collection, to the ongoing financial support of Village Theater, and the decision to become a Washington State Creative District, thereby declaring a belief in the arts as an economic stimulus. As you know, the city's population has grown from 17,000 to 45,000 in the last 22 years. The needs and desires of the community members to spend professional and leisure time in artistic pursuits near home has also greatly increased. As Rachel described, the surveys and focus groups undertaken in the last couple of years, there have been a thirst for art-making space. The development of an art center is not a small venture, nor is it one that is likely to be taken on by one entity. Most successful art centers are developed in collaboration, often through public and private partnerships. Many of these projects start with the donation of a building. Fundraising and grant acquisition is used to remodel and equipment purchases. Administrative costs are covered by public entities or nonprofits. Program and rental income need to be sufficient to support direct costs. The number of people an art center can attract is directly correlated to the number of classes offered, and the number of students that can be included in any given course. There needs to be enough diversity of classes across a wide timeframe to serve the needs of our creative population in Issaquah. Let me give you a couple examples of financially viable art centers and their sizes. The Mosher Community Art Center in Burien is a good example. This is an 8,000-square-foot art center, with half of the space dedicated to pottery, and the rest used for artist workspaces and multipurpose classrooms, such as painting and montage. A bit larger than Mosher is Kirkland Art Center. Like Mosher, they have space for pottery, a few artist workspaces, and a large multipurpose space. In addition, they have a nice-sized gallery. Double E sizes is the Jansen Art Center, located in the small community of Linden, Washington, with a population of 17,000. This is a good example of a multi-use art center that is the heart of community life. It's a 20,000-square-foot space, which is a former city hall and fire station, reimagined as an art center. On this scale, it means in addition to pottery, dedicated other art maker spaces, Jansen has a room for a gallery, and a recital theater. Mosher is small to mid, Jansen is midsize. What could a larger size offer? Okay, this is thinking really big here. The Red Brick Art Center in Colorado is a good example. Red Brick is a vibrant community art center, a former grade school supported by the city. It was designed to create venues for classes and artistic engagement, while also offering affordable rent to artists and nonprofits that support the arts. In addition to classes, gallery space, a recital theater, it's a long-term home to working artists and creative nonprofits. This crossover creates a creative hub and supportive network for the arts. Issaquah was the first creative district in King County, which is a statement about the value of creativity in our economy. However, residents travel to Bellevue, Kirkland, Burien, Seattle to engage in the arts. A dedicated art center in Issaquah could be an inclusive home for the visual arts on the east side, a place to support this community's growing needs, and a destination that contributes to our creative economy. So, we want you to all keep an open mind as you, we know you're looking at spaces right now, we know there's probably not anything in the immediate future, but we want you to keep your eyes and ears open to anything that you think might work, and we're going to be doing our work as a creative district to look for things, and we're hoping that we'll be on a journey together for the next couple of years to find something that'll work for Issaquah. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Do we have anyone else in the audience who would like to speak at this time? Not seeing anyone, and do we have anyone else online?
I see no more virtual hands raised, Council President.
Okay, fantastic. Well, as always, written comments can always be submitted at any time to, by email, to citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. So, really appreciate the comments. We heard from a developer about the potential for pioneer projects in the urban core, and Rachel, Juliette, and Leslie came to speak about the need for creative district space, and we always appreciate hearing from the public. Thank you. So, the next item of business is ID 1431, Affordable Housing Goals for Future Capital Investment. This will be presented by Jen Davis Hayes, our Economic Development Manager. You're going to create a new PowerPoint for us here, Jen? Great idea! Just loving, yep, sorry.
I was trying to share the program versus the screen, but this will work still. Now, yes. Okay, it is a Monday, isn't it? Good evening. My name is Jen Davis Hayes, I'm the Economic Development Manager, and here tonight to continue the conversation about affordable housing. So, we were, we were here in April's Committee of the Whole to talk about affordable housing across the gamut, talking about policy, capital investments, and operation investments. Tonight, we're returning from that conversation to talk about prioritization of affordable housing goals, so we can take that input to develop some proposals of how to invest the remaining affordable housing revenues that are available. The other purpose, which I did not put on here, but is in the slideshow, talks about, as our caller tonight mentioned in the previous meeting as well, is about the Pioneer Program. And council last month asked, well, let's learn a little bit more about what a Pioneer Program could be. So, I have some additional information about that, and again, want that, want to share that and better understand if you want to move forward with that. So, again, the direction we're looking for tonight is a prioritization of affordable housing goals. You know, it's really easy to jump to, let's do this, let's do that, in detail, and believe me, when I was trying to create this presentation, I was ready to talk about this, talk about that, and so, we really are trying to raise it up a level or two, and thinking about, what are, what are the areas that are most important to prioritize? We know that affordable housing is challenging, and complex, and affordable, and expensive for development, so how can we really get a better prioritization, and then have that continued conversation at services, safety, and parks, and getting to more of the details? And again, looking if you're interested in continuing to explore the Pioneer Program, and I can come back with recommendations around that, and then anything else you want to provide before we go off and do some more developing of ideas. So, the next three slides are a review of what we looked at last time. This is the housing continuum image that we started to use, and will continue to use, and so, love it, that, and as we come in future meetings, you'll see blocked out where we're talking about for any program, so policy or funding. And then, this is the affordable housing funding sources that, again, that we talked about last time. So, there's three sources of funding, HB 1590, which is the .1% sales tax, and so, our revenues through 2024, again, for this by name, is about $9.3 million. There are some restrictions for how you use this funding, certain populations, 60% area median income or below, and at least 60% of these revenues have to be used for capital. Now, for our current proposals, we have suggested a 75%, 25% split, so 75% for capital, 25% for operations. So, that provides human services, the funding, to build capacity and operations allocations that they can successfully implement over the next year and a half. Then, for the following years, we'll look at that percentage split to what makes sense during that time. The HB 1406, again, is a state pass-through, a little less restrictive, but still is looking at similar populations and 60% AMI or below. We have not allocated any of those resources yet, and then the density, or what was, then renamed to Development Bonus Program, we have about, we will have about $1.875 million in that from two projects. One of them was the Issaquah Work Lofts that paid for bonus density, and then the next payment we should be receiving soon this year is the $1.25 million that's in the Costco Development Agreement as they're complete, their certificate of occupancy for their office space. So, last meeting, these expenditures in this column here were either, they've already been included in the 2023-24 budget, they were discussed the last meeting, and are either in the budget now, or will be in the budget soon. So, again, we talked about allocations of the HB 1590, sale, 1%, 1% sales tax only, and so, the Motel 6 has both capital and operations funding there, rental assistance, the behavioral health, additional staff, and the placeholder of $5 million for the Transit Orient Development Opportunity Center construction. So, that leaves about $1.8 million left over for that funding. We, again, we did not talk about allocations of that $612,000 that will be available for the state pass-through, so that is available as well. We're looking tonight to talk about those two funds, so it's just over $2.4 million. To give you an idea of how much we have, again, we're not going to be talking about, we want 1 million to go here, 1 million to go there, but we will come back, our recommendations come back and talk to you about the Development Bonus Program, because that is eligible for investments in open space or affordable housing, and the criteria in the program doesn't say, this is how you should make those decisions. So, we want to work with parks, and we want to work with community planning and development to look at that and really define it better, and it's, since it's a little different animal, we didn't want to- We didn't want to throw the money into this pot yet. So there may be some additional affordable housing money that's available through this. You know, we'll have that conversation and the criteria that you will get a chance to provide some input to. So, the image again. So as we look at the policies that the city council and previous and past and current have passed, we really have a really good foundation. Our comprehensive plan, which, as you know, will be updated this year, really covers the entire gamut of the housing continuum, which is great to see. And you can see that follow-through with our city strategic plan, the Housing Strategy Work Plan, and also the workforce housing that's mentioned in the Economic Development Plan, which is currently being updated. Okay, this is the wrong... I just realized, this is the wrong PowerPoint. So this was... Sorry about that. So, the city's strategic plan calls out affordable housing, looking at the affordability meets the needs individuals across the income spectrum. So again, is looking at the whole continuum. A couple of things they mentioned here is to work with faith-based or other organizations in partnership to build affordable housing, look at city property assets, and of course, implement the Housing Strategy Work Plan. I think I may want to get out of this and get to the correct one. I apologize for that. So, if we can... Again, apologize, I have too many versions, I suppose, of this.
That just means we're going to see the final and best version.
Oh, my goodness.
We appreciate that.
Yes, yes. So, let me see. I can go to SharePoint. Again, I pulled it up out there thinking I had it already. So my apologies, my apologies. I think we had... We definitely had a lot of... When we look at the policies of the comp plan and such, it was becoming a little long conversation, so...
Zach has a question while you're pulling up.
Yes, please.
Yeah, just while you do that, to either you or the Deputy City Administrator, while you pull that up, you know, so much of the conversation that we've had on affordable housing and this graphic of the housing continuum that we're supporting is really great and I think would be new to a lot of members of our community. And I'm just wondering if, kind of once we have a clear strategy on capital in addition to kind of what we're doing in the operating side and in the planning side, would it be something we could do to like put together some informational flyer that we could take with us to listening sessions? Because, you know, the community survey lists this as a top-three priority that we should emphasize over the next two years. So it'd be great to be able to have something that we could hand out to the community and say, "Here's what we're doing for affordable housing."
Yes, that's a great idea. And I think that's the beauty of having that image is that it's... Again, we hope to use it a lot. So hopefully, you won't get sick of seeing it. But it is something that tells a story pretty quickly because I think when you say affordable housing, people go all over the gamut. And so you can be really clear that there's a need for all of the continuum, but this is what we're talking about in this moment. So, thank you, and I apologize for that snafu there. So we're back on track. So looking at... So getting into a little bit more detail around the Housing Strategy Work Plan. So, five of the nine strategies deal with affordable housing. So from retention to the new construction of the TOD, from accessing additional funding, which the city has done by passing the .1% sales tax, to increasing developer-provided affordable housing. And then, of course, ensuring that we have housing options for seniors, for the unhoused, and others that are... Could be forgotten in this process. So again, we... The policies are really great about covering the whole gamut. And then looking at, again, affordable housing from the human services component, the importance of housing security. So making sure that people... There aren't... People can remain in their homes. And also, how to respond to homelessness. So the funding allocations that have already been made by council or soon to be in front of council from the .1% sales tax include the rental assistance, the Motel 6 pilot program, and additional behavioral health staffing. So, again, we've made some great investments. And this is just a quick summary of the capital investments. Again, so I mentioned that Motel 6 has some operating and some capital investments. And then our $5 million placeholder for the TOD Opportunity Center is the big investment. We have the Arch Housing Trust Fund here. We do make an investment in that with general funds. And so we just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that as far as capital investments.
Councilmember Marts?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question about this slide.
Yeah.
So, TOD, in terms of the affordable rental, is 60 to 80? Is that right?
We had some lower. I want to say you're jogging my memory from a few years ago, like 30% with vouchers.
So that goes down into transitional and supportive then, right? I mean, 30 is...
It's...
I believe. But my question is really around... Affordable is generally defined as 80 to 120, right?
Well...
Or the workforce housing, let's say.
Oh, workforce.
To use a...
Sure.
A narrow band, right?
That can be, yes.
The reason that I ask is I look at this and I see market rate right next to affordable, right? And I see TOD going all the way. And I still wonder if there's a gap between... If you say there's that 80 to 120, what's market compared to, you know, that? I suspect market is a lot more than 120. And so, the thing that I think is missing in this picture, you look at this and you go, "Oh, well, you know, we have everything from market rate down to subsidized." But my question is really, is there still a gap? And it's the gap between the programs that we have in place that we talk about that are workforce housing and where the market's actually at. That's my question.
Okay. I don't know if Andrea, if there's any... You look like you're ready to interject a little bit.
Just no. I think we'll have to follow up with information to that question.
Yeah. And that's a great, I think, follow-up when I talk to developers as well, talking about... Because they had mentioned, yeah, we're not at 100%, right? We're above the AMI when we're talking about that. So we can ask that and kind of get a better feel for that, so.
Thank you. I have a concern that there's still that missing middle. There's still a missing middle there between what we think of as workforce housing and what it actually costs to live in this community. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray?
All right. I'm not sure where I'm going with this, so bear with me. But the Opportunity Center was really about kind of healthcare. And I'm trying to figure out how do you rationalize healthcare to affordable housing? Or is it a fungibility issue that the dollars are going to TOD? And so, it's hard to track the color of the dollars. But it doesn't seem to me that even if a great program supports all the way, but it doesn't seem to me to be about affordable housing.
So, just to let you know, the .1% allows the construction for behavioral health services. So we're not moving money around or changing the color of money to do this.
But the TOD was... I mean, the Opportunity Center was about physical health, not just behavioral health.
Right, right. It's both, and dental, and all that good stuff, yes. So this really will help to provide support for those affordable housing units above. But you're right, it's... And it's an important component of the whole project. You know, you probably remember many discussions about the TOD and the many pieces around that. And so, this was an important component that made the whole development work.
I think we just want to confirm that before we get too far down that path of spending these dollars on that. And if you've already done it, super.
Yeah.
But it seems a little bit on the edge to me.
Okay, and we can show you... Yeah, because I have that... The RCW and everything there. So definitely can do that. Okay. Okay, any other questions before? So I just wanted to mention, and this is a little bit of getting into the weeds, which we don't want to do tonight, but I did, in the last meeting, I mentioned the Strategic Opportunity Fund. And so this was an idea that we proposed. We haven't worked... I have not worked on any details yet because, again, we wanted to come back to hear about the goals and prioritization. But the idea is that if we had an opportunity fund that we could provide some direct financial investment or incentives, you could be used to reduce city fees, whatever that may be. But again, we're not here to talk about this tonight, but I didn't want to forget about it because it was mentioned in the April meeting. So, switching gears for a minute. So providing some more information about the Pioneer Program. So Pioneer Programs are intended to provide assistance to the first development in an area that doesn't have that type of development. So, first office building in, first residential in. And as you know, there are zero housing units currently in the urban core of Central Issaquah Plan. So, many of our policies and Central Issaquah Plan states that housing and affordable housing in this area would be beneficial because of the proximity to transit amenities and jobs. And so, on the slide here, the top portion is actually what is currently in the Central Issaquah Plan, again, adopted 10 years ago. It talks about a recommended implementation strategy. Now, again, that did not move forward. But they mentioned about the relaxed definitions of affordability, doing an incentive program to help for initial number residential developments. And it even suggested 200 first units in the urban core and 100 in the... Outside the urban core. Not suggesting this is what we're going to go with. I just wanted to show you what was in the plan. And then I worked with Arch to find about other Pioneer Programs in the area. And so, Kenmore, Kirkland, and Redmond all have Pioneer Programs or have had because once you do those number of programs, the program's over. You'll notice in Kenmore, the reduction was about parking minimums, and they didn't get any development. So it really... That really rings true for what I've heard from developers as far as what is most important for turning the levers, especially because of our new adoption of Title 18, which looks at some pretty appropriate parking levels. But both Kirkland and Redmond, so all of these areas focus on an area and the number of units, right? And so, again, once those are developed, the program is no longer available. Everybody else has to develop at the current level. And so, again, Kirkland and Redmond are no longer available for developers.
Jen, I've got a question on that. Do you have any information about whether those Pioneer Projects then spurred other development? Or are we just seeing that, yes, somebody took advantage of the incentive and that was what was built?
So, Arch did say... So in Kirkland, it was the Rose Hill or Totem Lake, and they were really trying to get some development in Totem Lake. That's been very successful. I don't know that you can say that this Pioneer Program allowed those other things to happen. But there has definitely been additional development in that area. And the Overlake Village, again, new zones that the city's looking at trying to get some more development in, and that has started to spur some additional development. So, I don't have quantity, but they had... They did say it... The actual first... There is more than 100 units that kind of came through. So people were trying to get in that development line.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Sorry, turned myself off. When you're talking about relaxed definitions of affordability, what does that look like? And how would it be applied?
Yeah, that's a great question. Sometimes the way I see it, I'm like, "Wait, lower affordability?" So that would actually mean, so instead of maybe 60%, you allow 80% AMI. Or you require a less percentage of it. So there's lots of ways to kind of do it. What Kirkland did was to have lower percentage AMI for the first 100 and then the next 50, 150. So they kind of tiered it. And then Redmond, I believe, just waived affordability for the first 100 units, so.
So to follow up, so the percentage, like, we asked for 10% right now, inclusive zoning, right?
A little higher, yeah. 12.5, yeah.
So if we relax that, it would be 5% or 2%?
We could do that. We could also ask for 12.5% at a higher AMI. So instead of it 60%, we could ask for it at 80%.
Okay, thank you.
Or whatever percent, yeah.
Yep.
And so, I think, I believe you know that my role in this year has been pivoted a bit to do some research on Central Issaquah as a whole to find out why redevelopment hasn't happened and what those barriers are. And so, I already had started to talk to developers, so it was really timely to add in this question about Pioneer Programs. So had these... Had conversations with developers and basically, you know, focused them on things that we can change. I was very clear to them upfront, we just passed our Title 18. We are not going to change standards. We are not going to look at that right now. And as Brian on the public comment mentioned, yes, there is inflation. There is, you know, high interest rates. We're looking at, in a general time, what has stopped you from looking at Central Issaquah? And specifically now, affordable housing in a Pioneer Program, what would help to move the needle there? Because, again, the Central Issaquah Plan has been in existence for 10 years. So, also to mention, every developer is different, right? So they have a different approach, they have different risk tolerance. Even within residential, they have different housing types of what they consider their folks. And so, but there was... This is with the consistency of what I've heard from folks. So, again, the risk for being first in the area was a concern. The high-water table, which we hear about a lot. So, because they... Especially in the urban core, can't build structured parking completely underground and, you know, maybe can do one level if they can make that happen. They have to build the structured parking above ground. So then they hit their height limit pretty quickly. And then they need to build more housing in order to make the project pencil. So they have the inclusionary zoning affordable requirements. And then now, they're adding on the density bonus requirements. And as was mentioned before, MFTE is at many of the other cities, and that's how they kind of make that work. So, that's just something, again, we hear about this, but we maybe don't see those next steps of why then, how the high-water table can impact a development because you're losing rentable space when you're building up, right? People have talked about that many of the cities use 80% as their kind of developer-provided financing. I know that there are some programs that are looking at lower. But developer mentioned it's hard to get financing for that. And again, everybody has different financing, you know, equity versus banks. But below at 50 and 60%, there's different programming and different support services that are important to provide, and they're not equipped to do that. Talking about the cost of affordable housing, so obviously, you reduce your rent. You have reduced rent for those units. And as Councilmember Marts mentioned, we're already at 120, 130, 140%. So those costs are now being added on to that percentage. And so now, you're even making it more challenging for that middle to afford the market-rate units. And then you heard, again, in the comments, but this was, again, from all the developers, is that development costs are similar throughout the region, but rents are lower here in Issaquah. So I know that we've seen articles that say we're the most expensive and looked at a little bit at that last article. It was a median, so I'm not sure if... A couple of things, if, you know, we have a higher percentage of new units compared to other cities where maybe our, you know, newer units get higher than older units. Or it could be the size of the bedrooms, et cetera.
And Jen, thank you. Just in the interest of time, I'm wondering if you can try to kind of wrap things up and summarize your high-level points.
Great, thank you. Sorry about that. So, impact fees, they say they're the highest. I don't know that we're the highest exactly, but high-impact fees. And then predictability and answers early in the project discussions. Our friends at CPD will be working on that. So I know that we'll have that under control with what they just passed. So for discussion points, again, wanting to understand better the high-level priorities, we'll be coming back to committee to get into the weeds and talking about details before we then return for full conversation. But is it preservation of already affordable housing? Is it new construction, homeownership, rental, certain area, certain AMI level? These are just ideas, looking for your additions. And then for the Pioneer Program, is it something you want me to continue to pursue? Come back with a recommended ideas of how to potentially do that? Are there any other things you want me to consider or information that you'd like when we have that for future discussion? So, we recommend to move forward with these things. After we get the prioritization, to go back and develop funding recommendations, the draft program, and return to Safety, Services, Safety, and Parks. It mentioned in the memo that it's... It'll be the September meeting. I understand we actually have an early August meeting that we will come back to if that makes sense for the council. And again, then we'll have as many conversations as we need to have about this to get to a great place so we can start to hopefully impact affordable housing in Issaquah. place, so we can start to hopefully impact affordable housing in Issaquah. And all of that information will be then used as we develop our recommendations for the next by in and budget as well. So.
So we have a question. I think we're actually going to go into questions just after. Do we need to summarize any of those slides? No?
Those same slides.
Fantastic. So we're going to take questions, and then we'll see if there's any public comment, and then go into feedback. Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you. Can you, sorry, can you go back to the list of, you had a bunch of, there we go. Nope.
Is that the one?
No, I can't even, it's the one that had, like, homeownership.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there we go. All right. So for many, many, many years, we said that one of the questions, or one of the challenges we had about getting people into ownership was condo liability, right? And just before the world stopped, the state legislature did, in fact, enact condo liability reform. And so one of the questions that I have is, are we looking at, how has the, you know, the long sought hope that that would provide an opportunity into ownership for folks, are we starting to see that out of the marketplace? And, you know, what does it mean for Issaquah in terms of our options that are different than the options that we had before condo liability reform?
Yeah. That's a great question. So as part of the Housing Strategy Work Program Implementation Grant that the city received and Kristin Leeson's working on, that was one of the questions, and I don't think it's there yet, right? So she, looking at that, it hasn't been enough of a change to move the market. So we will continue, as a city, to advocate for that with our legislatures, but it hasn't.
I'm sorry, was the liability not sufficiently addressed by the reform that occurred? You said we might still continue to advocate. I thought we
But we will.
I mean, I thought we sort of addressed the condo liability issue, but I see one of my fellow council members shaking his head no. Perhaps I don't understand the issue well enough. Thank you.
Yeah, and I don't know that I know the issues well enough, but we can, that is definitely something as part of what's called the Housing Action Planning Implementation, Plan Implementation, that will be in front of council soon, but I can get you some more information about that.
Okay. Councilmember DeMichele?
Right. Jen, for the preservation of already affordable housing, the three revenue sources that we've identified, and the two that we're talking about tonight, is that money available for private owners of housing that is affordable? And I'm thinking, one example would be, I understand the Raleigh Corporation, for example, has several older apartment buildings where they, that they continue to maintain and that where the rents are fairly affordable. Would, and that's just one example, I'm just giving that as an example, but would any of that funding be available for private enterprises who are able to maintain housing that is affordable, not, you know,
Right.
Affordable housing?
And I believe so. I need to do some more research, because I need to make sure it doesn't say government, nonprofit only.
Yeah.
But I think the way, we also need to make sure there's some covenant on the property, so it can't, you know, change when it gets sold, et cetera. So I will definitely look into that. But that's, I mean, that is one of the ideas of how do we, we have a list that was done as part of the Housing Work Strategy, Housing Strategy Work Plan, sorry. And so, you know, we would go through that list and try to find what might be some ideal candidates, so.
Councilmember Joe?
Thank you very much. Jen Davis Hayes, I was interested in learning more about the MFTE program.
Yeah.
How would the city go about looking to analyze that and create one? And given what we've heard from the developer who spoke tonight, how do we make that at a level that's actually going to be used, that's actually going to be something that would help us get out of this housing conundrum? If you could talk a little about the timing and how far out we would expect it before we'd be able to use it, a little bit more would be helpful. And if you don't have the answer tonight, we can certainly
Yeah.
Get a memo or what have you.
Yeah, so the good thing is, we actually have MFTE, but it's very specific to the TOD project and that site. So we could legislatively expand it to where we wanted to. But we would have to look at, do some research about what makes sense as far as levels that you want to look at, and if you want to do eight, 12-year plus. So there's some components that we'd work with Arch, because they actually manage that program for the East Side to do the reporting for that. So it would be, it would go, when I looked at it for the TOD, we did research about what other cities did, what did that mean for, we showed what that meant for that specific property as far as property tax that you would get, you don't, you still continue to get property tax on the land and commercial spaces. So we did an analysis to show how that would impact, and so on. So, timing-wise, not sure, but if that's something that council wanted some more research, we could put that on the list.
Okay. And as you look at the other cities, I would ask that you take a look and see the levels that were set, and then whether or not the programs were actually used. I don't think we want to venture down the path of creating a program like Kenmore did for parking, and then not having it be utilized by any of the developers out there. And I guess the other thought would be, you know, how far out can we put that exemption? Can we extend the time out so that it is more palatable for developers to do that? Is that allowed? And how far is the limit would be another question I would put forward for you to research.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mertz, followed by Councilmember or Deputy Council President Hall?
So as we look at, I'm interested, you mentioned Kristin Leeson's project that she's working on. Are we looking at, you know, when the legislature decided to strip us of our ability to have single-family housing in the city, are we looking at, do we have any idea yet, or have we started trying to figure out what that impact will be? Because it seems like that's the single biggest change to the marketplace in my 14 years on council. It seems like there's going to be a sort of before and after. And have we started putting our finger on what we think that will do?
Councilmember Mertz, this is Andrea Snyder. Yes, we have started. The legislature, of course, just made that action. They have not provided a lot of guidance about how to interpret certain things. So we are looking into it. We hope to come back to city council and the community with more information about those impacts to Issaquah. And right now, the timing escapes me, but in the next couple of months, we want to come back to the city council and begin to discuss what those impacts are.
Thank you.
Deputy Council President Hall?
Thank you. I forgot one of my questions, but I'm sure it'll come to me after I ask the first one. So have we also thought about, like, so pioneer program, exciting about, like, incentivizing kind of a place where we currently don't have what we want? Have we thought about, like, what are the other kind of creative ways that the city can do the same thing? Like, is there, like, a specific utility that is kind of cost prohibitive in the area that the city can be thinking about creative ways to support or anything like that? I'm just curious, kind of like, how many different angles have we thought about this problem?
Yeah, so actually, as part of, again, the why redevelopment hasn't happened in Central Issaquah, that is one of the things I'll be looking at. So I've started those conversations with our public works to say capacity, and what is that? So I don't know that that's, I don't know the impact of that, so can't say that that would make a difference.
And that's fine, yeah. As long as that's on our radar, like, that's great if you're talking about it.
Yeah. And that's a little bit of why, talking, so the developers I didn't mention were people that have developed in Issaquah in the past, currently looking at it, and, you know, kind of looked at it but didn't proceed. So we're getting people who have been there, done that. And so they, you know, if they didn't bring up concern about utilities, then I'm like, okay, they haven't either gotten that far, or that wasn't an issue, right? But, again, every place, every site can be different with that, so.
That's fair. I did remember my other question, too. So when it comes to capital priorities with some of these funds, too, is another option to just, I guess, the question more is, what is our current, are we currently giving Arch all the contributions that it's expecting from Issaquah, or from a city of our size from Issaquah, or is that something that we should consider in this all, in the mix, too? And also, sorry, there's like three parts to this question now. Is it possible to say, you know, here's our contribution like we always do, but we also have this strategic opportunity fund or whatever that would fund it if it was within an X-mile radius of Issaquah or something like that? Is that even something that's possible, or does Arch kind of say, no, if you contribute to the pot, it has to go to the whole Arch region? Doesn't need to be answered now.
Yeah, yeah, no, I can definitely ask that. And so one of the things I expect to do after tonight is to work with them about developing the next steps, and so we can definitely talk about that, so, yeah.
Okay, not seeing any other questions. So at this point, we have an opportunity for public comment. Do you have a question? Okay, go ahead. Councilmember DeMichele?
Yeah, but I was being very slow. Sorry about that. So following up on Deputy Council President Hall's question, the Strategic Opportunity Investment Fund, and I know we're not really focused on that tonight, but is that a way to capture a little bit more of the funding that we give to Arch for specific Issaquah projects? Is that like our own little trust fund? Or is that the purpose of it, basically?
Um, yes. So the reason we also thought of this, so there was an opportunity to purchase with a nonprofit organization, an already existing apartment community that was affordable, and Arch said, well, what money do you have to put in? And we're like, well, we have this money here, but without criteria, without whatever, we're not going to come to council and go, we think this is a great idea, because we really, again, want to think about what your goals are and where should that be focused on. Because if you want, again, if you want me to go focus on preserving current units that are affordable, I will go and hit the road and start talking to owners and start talking to anybody that we have in our radar. So I think having that extra amount of money allows us to then, you know, focus where those goals are, so.
Yeah, thank you very much. And so I think throwing that into the mix of options that we might have is a really good idea. Thanks.
Okay, so I'm going to look at the clerk to see if we have anyone online interested in, that might be interested in public comment. If we have anyone, I'll tell them to raise their hand and
Someone did just raise their hand.
Oh, fantastic. They're reading my mind. Love it. Much appreciated.
Brian, I have again made you a panelist. You should be able to unmute and turn on your video.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Oh, great. I just, I'm listening to the conversation and want to clarify a few things on the various programs and what we're seeing in different jurisdictions. And, again, I'll paint myself as somewhat of a quasi-expert. We design numerous amounts of these, have done it for 25 years throughout the region, and involved in, specifically in these TOD projects. So I do know all the competitors. I do know exactly what's going on. For clarity about the pioneer program, we don't have anyone in Totem Lake, but I do know one group in there that had bought the property 15 years ago, which changes the dynamics and the calculus on that. I can speak to the Overlake, because we do have a few projects in there and just completed one. So while there was some earlier ones going in as a pioneer project, we just recently completed a 635-unit project. The inclusionary zoning criteria was at 10% of the units, at 80% AMI, which included MFTE, which, you know, the developer worked, and it's, again, a block away from the TOD, which works really well. And, again, I want to point out the dynamic there. This is, it's outside of a, it's not even a pioneer project at this state. This is just a, to make the project work at the Overlake Station, right next to the Microsoft campus, was at 10% of the units, at 80% AMI, and with the MFT. So correlate that to Issaquah, where you don't have the same job basis, you have light rail that's 15 years out. If you really want to attract people, you at least got to start where these other stations are operating at and getting inclusionary zoning. And we're not seeing any of them under the 80% because the capital markets won't go to that. The idea to put in or incentivize older housing product is a great tool. Again, we're building projects, they're over $300 a square foot, just in hard cost to produce these nowadays. So to expect to produce housing at over $300 a square foot with limited parking and all the rest, and then you discount, say, if you're at 70% AMI, so you're taking about 30% or more of the rent income, and right now, your program speaks to about 12.5%. So you take 12.5% of your revenue and drop it by 30%. It does devastating things to the value and the possibility to get anything financed for this. So the dynamics are, we're not talking like a few percentages off, you're way off the mark of what would make this, these projects work. So I just go back to what Eco Northwest had proposed to your group a while back of where you can't, you really shouldn't go under 80% AMI, and there should be other incentives. And, again, the MFTE program is a good one, because it's offset with the tax bait. Whether it's eight, 10, 12 years, I don't think that's a big issue. It's, once you get established and you get moving, what you want to do is get some of this housing in place before the light rail comes in and gets opened. So we'd love to participate in, I can, if we, I wasn't prepared, because we just got notice of this on Friday afternoon, but we can come in with the requisite experts. We've analyzed this on virtually every light rail line, both the Seattle Line and the East Link Line, and can go through it project by project. But I just wanted to clarify those key things. Thanks.
Great, thank you, Brian. Do we have anyone else online?
Council President, I see no more virtual hands raised at this time.
Okay, fantastic. Well, again, you can always email us, citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov. So at this point, we've got kind of two areas of feedback. One is this concept of priorities and outcomes with a potential financial investment. And then the other one is on the pioneer project. So anybody want to start on one versus the other? Councilmember Hunt?
I will start on the slide that is up, which is the priorities and outcomes. I think we should prioritize, I think there's strong arguments to be made for prioritizing preservation of already affordable housing, something that's in our strategic, our Housing Work Action Plan. It's something we know we do have this relatively rare and very important asset in our community, and, you know, now's the time to act to make sure we don't lose that. Also, those are people that are already living in that housing, and so it's very important, I think, that we don't lose that housing stock for community members who are already living here in Issaquah and already our neighbors. So I think $2.4 million, I mean, it sounds like a lot, but it's not that much. If we were to try to go out for construction of new housing, it's very expensive. So I think this could go a long way towards preserving some of our already affordable, and that would make a big difference for the folks that are there.
Deputy Council President Hall, then Councilmember DeMichele?
Yeah, I was actually feeling very similarly, thinking along the same lines, but I have one more level, which was that if it was near transit. So I was thinking, you know, ways that we can encourage more kind of naturally transit-oriented development, essentially. This is aligned with some of our goals, too. The first thing I did to prepare for this meeting was look to, I used to be a member of the King County Affordable Housing Committee, and now Councilmember Walsh has taken my seat on that. But there's this task force report that put out, and one of the goals was prioritizing either new construction or preservation of existing affordable housing near transit or near your ability to get around more quickly. So I think you're right, $2.4 million isn't very, isn't that much. And I wonder if we can't say, maybe we prioritize in this first leg, the preservation of housing near transit would be what my preference would be. Although I just thought of another what my preference would be. Although I just thought of another priority that I think actually would live above this one in my head. And that is, if the TOD is struggling again, it needs more than $5 million, I want to know about that. And this is, this would be the money that I would think we'd want to go to first. So assuming that's not happening, then this would be the strategy that I'd want to go with.
Councilmember DeMichele?
Yes, I think, I think you could probably tell by the questions I was asking that I, preservation of already affordable housing would be my top priority. I think PSRC and Council President Walsh probably knows this better than I do, but put out, you know, a study showing how much affordable housing we're losing. So we're not only behind in the number of new units that we need, but we're losing, we're falling behind on the housing that's already there. So, and I think that, I'll call it a trust fund. The trust fund idea where we'd be able to utilize that for local expenditures is a great tool for accomplishing this preservation. And then the question I ask about, would that be available to, for us to expand that on housing that is currently owned by private organizations, I think is something we need to explore. Because there is certainly in our community, those types of affordable, of housing that is affordable, that we would want to preserve as well. And those are getting more and more difficult to maintain with the inflation that we've got going on. So I think we want to look at those and make sure that if there's any opportunities to preserve those, and if the money is, could be legally spent on that, that we would at least look at those opportunities as well. So preservation would definitely be my top priority. I do think that Council Deputy President Hall, I will get that, be able to say that easier one of these days, has a very good point that if we do need more money for the TOD, I think, of course, that is our top priority. But given that we've covered that cost, the preservation would be for sure my top priority.
Councilmember Ray?
Thank you. I agree that we are very blessed in Isquah to have a lot of naturally occurring affordable housing, and preserving that is absolutely essential. So I think that's, that's for sure. I think that's my top even over the TOD, is we, you know, we can't say we're going to build all this, buy all this, and, and at the same time, we're destroying affordable housing. But I think if I'm looking at a figure of $2.4 million, which is a lot of money to me, but not a lot of money when it comes to building housing, I kind of would like to see us pursue something with Arch and get a multiplier effect. And that, you know, maybe they won't build in Issaquah, but that's okay, because this is a regional problem, not an Issaquah problem per se. So that's kind of where my head goes. Don't, don't lose anything that we've got today. But if, if that's the number we're working with, let's, let's take advantage of Arch and, and push in that direction.
Councilmember Mertz?
Thank you. I, I feel like I don't have enough information to have a strong opinion right now. I, I miss Arthur Sullivan from Arch, because Arthur used to give us more information than we even knew what to do with. And I would come out of meetings with Arthur having a much better idea of, you know, heavily, you know, very, very low income to low income to affordable to workforce to market. And I would understand, you know, what AMI is currently and what it is to be at 80% of AMI, and would have an idea of how our existing housing stock compared to what the market was looking for. Because there would be, you know, the number of rental units that would come up at any, you know, in any given year. And I, I don't feel like I have that right now. I mean, I see from our report card, we now consider AMI $134,000 a year, which is quite a bit of money. So if we say that, well, if you're above 100, 100% of AMI, only 9% of people are cost burdened. Well, if, if you're making over $135,000 a year, okay. 9% cost burden, sounds like that, that might be doable. But, you know, 2.4 million is not, to, to echo Councilmember Ray, is not a large lever in this, in this conversation. I wish I could say that we should partner with Arch. I haven't seen Arch in a long time. Only thing I've heard from Arch is trying to get us involved in state-level political issues about how landlords should work things. Other than that, we haven't heard a lot from Arch in a while. And boy, I wish that was different. Right now, I'm not excited necessarily about, about giving them more money. I would like to, to see us something, do us, I'd like to see us do something clever with that 2.4 million, but I don't know what it is. And again, my long-winded answer is I still feel like I'm not sure. Historically, I've always said it's about the workforce housing, it's about that missing middle, 80 to 120. Our report card really says the 80 to 120s doing kind of okay, but I don't know if I believe that. So I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure what to do with that 2.4, but we should do something smart and innovative with it and try something that we haven't tried before. Because if you keep doing what you've been doing, you'll keep getting what you've been getting. Thank you.
Councilmember Joe, you have anything on this? Otherwise, I'm.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate you voluntold me there. That's excellent. Thank you for the conversation tonight. It's been, it's been great. I think that what I would throw out is, is we look at our TOD project that's potentially coming in a couple more years. And when we started that project, Tola had a lot more hair, and I didn't have wrinkles and things like that. It, it took a long time to get there, right? So I'll just throw out that, that maybe we should use the $2.4 million if we can. Is, is a capital investment a property investment? And if it is, maybe we should be looking at acquiring property and putting that 2.4 million down now in an area around the future site for the terminus for sound transit. Now, we talked about, you know, we want to have that sound transit terminus be a location where people can get right off the train, right off the sound transit line and go to their house, or, you know, go to a restaurant there and not have to get into another car and create another traffic trip, right? If we take the 2.4 now, start looking around like we're doing with some of the other space conditions, space and office challenges we're having, maybe we find that piece of property that's big enough for us to put a four or five-story affordable housing unit in the future there. I know the housing crisis is right in our faces right now, and I hope that the rules of commerce is working for missing middle housing will help clarify the things that are going to be going forward. We're going to see some new development that might not have been occurring before because of the ADU law, the CEP reform, the missing middle housing, and the permit reform law that all came down through this last legislative session. So I know that we have a gap right now. I hope the, the current legislation will help fill that gap in the short term. Our TOD will fill affordable housing in the short term. And then we look to 2.4 to invest in the future for a place around the terminus as a longer-term plan. So I'll throw that out for consideration. Thank you.
Okay, I'll throw in my final thoughts on this. I think from my perspective, the HB 1590 sales tax, my mind on that says that really should be more of that transitional housing. Because if we didn't take that sales tax, that would have gone to the county, and that was really the intention. So my big priority with that is to make sure that we hold to the intent of that legislation, which was really to provide something that developers wouldn't. And so I have a strong preference for that 30 to 50, 30 to 60% AMI. Whether that happens through buying existing, already existing housing, or building new, or working with Arch, I don't really have a strong preference on that. I just really think we need to stay committed to that concept of 30 to 50% because nobody else is going to build it. It's not going to come through developers. It's not going to come through incentives. It requires not only substantial investments in that building or creating that type of housing, but also supporting it throughout. So when I'm looking at this 2.4 million, some of which comes from that sales tax, I'm really thinking about that. I'm also thinking about long-term. That's not just going to be 2.4 million. Over the years, it's going to grow. And I know we have a future conversation, but I'm, I'm already thinking about, well, does it make sense to utilize that money now? Or does it make sense to let it potentially grow toward a bigger idea, much like we've been able to do with the TOD project? And then regarding the preservation of naturally affordable, affordable housing, I would really need more information, particularly, as I said, considering that 0.1 sales tax requires a focus on 60% or lower AMI. And I just don't quite understand how to connect the dots between that, because I don't think that anything that is naturally affordable is that affordable in Issaquah. And I would also have a strong interest in covenants, something that makes sure that it is truly affordable at lower than that 60% long-term. I am slightly concerned that then if we bought up existable, existing naturally affordable housing using some sort of funds, or using that fund, that we would actually have to kick people out in order to make it 60%, which I don't think is something that we're interested in. So again, strong preference toward the 30 to 60% because that's the, the intent of the legislation. So Andrea, do you and Jen, do you guys have what you need on that portion?
Yes, we do. Thank you.
So next, you want to do on this? Okay, go ahead.
So there were a couple of different priorities that different councilmembers had. It's, it, I think it would be helpful to get a sense when this next comes to us, comes back to us of how much, how far this $2.4 million would go in those different areas. For example, with the preservation of already affordable housing, how many units we would be expected to be able to preserve? And what's the timeline versus how many, you know, versus what a property along the sound, in the sound transit area, how, how far 2.4 million would go towards that, or versus new transitional housing? Because I think that would be very helpful when we consider next steps. And right now, they're kind of all considered as options, but we don't know how far the money goes for those different ones.
And I'll also throw in, just when it comes back, it would be great to get a summary of what you've heard, because I think there are a lot of different opinions. And so it's always interesting to get into staff's mind on, and what did you take from this meeting? And do we agree that that was what we heard said as well? So that would be great. Okay, next thing they need from us is on Councilmember DeMichele.
Okay, so question, comment. So one thing that you get when you have 30 to 60% AMI is many times you need to bring in managers, and you need human services provisions, and all of that needs to be organized by, you know, social service agencies. And I think, and I apologize to Brian, because I don't know his last name, so Brian, sorry. But I think that's what he was talking about when he said it's so difficult to pencil out that 30 to 60% because it's not just construction, it is the ongoing programs that go with that. And that's what makes it so difficult for a developer to pencil that out. So just want to bring that up, and especially when we're going into the discussion of the Pioneer Program, that, that if we're looking at creating more affordable housing, we have to understand that, and there are federal supports for 30 to 60 that are also there that people can apply for, but that also is a lot of, requires a lot of investment as well. That there are reasons why developers are saying that under 80% is a difficult thing to take on. So just want to bring that up. And Jen, correct me if I'm not correct on, on that.
No, you are correct. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
And I will clarify that I definitely am not thinking 30 to 50% on the Pioneer Program. What I'm looking at is related to the priorities and outcomes for the funding that we have. If we're the only ones that have money that can invest in that, I think that's important. So next thing we need from everybody is Pioneer Project. I'm going to try and be quick. We are currently 30 minutes over our timeline. So anybody want to start? I'm going to start, just so that we don't lose time. I really appreciate the idea of a Pioneer Project. At this point, I'm not sure I support it. I think I would prefer to take the developer feedback seriously and use that to make code changes rather than necessarily incentivize an initial project. I think we need to make sure we have our ducks in a row on all of the areas and not just assume that we can decrease the number of affordable housing and get something. I'd like to really make sure that we are there for everything. I also, quite honestly, think that the value of housing in an area near a light rail station will increase as we come closer to that period of time, and that will help it pencil out, which would enable more potential affordable housing in that area. So I'm not necessarily feeling the urgency to get something started in that particular area. I would rather focus on the whole area in general and really take that developer feedback and the stuff that we got from Eco Northwest and make code changes. Anybody else? Councilmember Ray?
I didn't want you to be the only one. I'd like to see more data on the effectiveness of the programs before making a determination of where we go with these. My, my, my initial reaction is similar to the Council President's, that, you know, don't, don't see a need for it. But I'd like to see more data on where it's been, where it's been successful, and what the situation was. And then we can kind of evaluate and see if it moves the needle on the things we want to move the needle on.
Deputy Counsel President Hall?
I'll just be quick. I, I feel the exact opposite, though, and I would like us to explore the program. And I think the recommendation was that for the Services, Safety and Parks to do that work. So I would support them kind of digging into this a little deeper.
Councilmember Hunt, then Mertz, then DeMichele, then Joe.
Like Council Deputy President Hall, I think that this, I would like to see us continue to pursue the Pioneer Project program. It's in our CIP that we, that this would be one of the strategies. And, you know, as we realize the, as we try to get the kind of development that we set forth with the CIP, which got a ton of community input and a ton of engagement, I think we should, we should use this opportunity to try to get what would be, I think, the first of these sorts of projects. I think we don't quite know what the specific code changes would be to, to get this, especially first, over this first kind of initial inertia and get these first project or projects. And so this would be an opportunity to actually work with the developer and get that, the specific code changes for that specific project. And then we could learn from that and make subsequent code changes. So I think the first project is probably, you know, might require additional conversations. I think this would allow us to do that, and I think it would allow us to explore. And also, you know, this city has in the past been open to pilots. And I think this, as a sort of pilot or pioneer project, would really potentially be beneficial, setting us down the path to realizing our CIP and, and having this sort of development in the central area. So I am supportive of continuing with this Pioneer Program project.
Councilmember Mertz?
As the Chair of the Services and Safety Committee, I enthusiastically support Council Deputy President Hall's suggestion to send it to Services and Safety. Bring it on. I always like more work in front of Services and Safety. And I know my fellow Services and Safety members do as well. I think that, you know, I, if we do, if we, if we look at doing something innovative, let's look at doing something really innovative. Like, I don't want to look at something innovative and have it be like it's a one-bedroom with, you know, MF, you know, multifamily tax exemption. Like, I, I get it. We've seen that a million times over the last 20 years. You know, I think there's some really innovative stuff out there around, you know, very small apartments. I, I would be really interested in seeing us, we as a city have been truly innovative in a number of areas in, in recent years, quite, quite beyond our size in the, in. in a number of areas in, in recent years, quite, quite beyond our size in the, in the community. And I, I would really love to see us think outside the box and do something really clever if, in fact, we're going to try to do something different, because all the same old solutions, you know, haven't been working for a long time. Thanks.
Councilmember De Michelle?
Yes, I too think that the Pioneer Program has a lot of potential value. As I said earlier, it, it's a difficult time for developers to pencil out their projects right now. It's a very volatile time for them, and this will be the first project in the central area. And so I think we need to recognize that they are taking a risk. And so I look forward to the conversations, you know. We don't want to prove something that we don't know what the details say. But on the other hand, I'd like to see what the proposal might be, what they would come back with, and what we can work out. And as Councilmember Mertz said, maybe it'll be something surprising and innovative, and that would be really exciting. So I support the idea of going ahead with the Pioneer Program.
Councilmember Joe?
I would just echo the support for the Pioneer Program. I think we need to really see what's out there and try all the different levers and see what might work and what doesn't work. We'll learn from that experience and be able to do the next project and the next project a little bit better, as Councilmember Hunt has pointed out. If we just wait for the perfect pitch or the perfect opportunity to come, and it never comes along, we're not going to get anywhere at all. So let's try some projects, let's see what's out there, let's see what works and what doesn't, and why, and then we can go from there. So look forward to hearing more in the committee meeting, and I'll pencil out two and a half hours for that. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have everything we need on both of these items? Oh, okay. Fantastic.
Yes, we do. Thank you, Council, for a great discussion. We have everything we need. Before we move on to the next item, if I may, Council President, note the time. It's almost nine o'clock. This next item, we had anticipated to be 60 minutes. If Council wants to continue with this item, then great. Certainly, staff and the administration are prepared. If you'd like to push this off to another meeting at another time, we can also do that.
I'm just going to take a look at the planning calendar coming up, trying to, do you have a proposed?
One possibility, though slightly unorthodox, would be at the next regular City Council meeting. Such discussions don't usually happen at Council meetings, but we do have this slated on the planning calendar, if we needed additional time to discuss this item. So we could, we could take some time to discuss this item at the regular Council meeting, knowing that there would be no action requested from Council, other than good old-fashioned discussion.
We do love some good old-fashioned discussion, and not having it at 9:00 PM at night. Okay, I'm hearing some nods. Any objections to the idea?
I'm in favor of keeping going, because our staff has been here and dedicated their evening. But I will concede, I will do whatever the rest of the Council would like to do.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is there anything time-critical about the decision or the, the input we're going to provide? I mean, are you going to go out and do something today versus in a week or two?
Not over the course of the next two weeks, no.
So I'm feeling like we're kind of okay to discuss this at the June 5th regular meeting?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Otherwise, I was going to charge right ahead. At this point, then, we're going to push off the conversation for ID 1343, the Police, Court and City Hall Planning Future Options and Funding until the June 5th meeting. So that leaves us with Good of the Order. Does anybody have anything for Good of the Order? Deputy Council President Hall?
I do. I think it was last week, sent out a quick note to everyone about thanking boards and commissions. Thanks to those who you have heard back from. I did want to just go over quickly the next couple of weeks and see, and if you have any thoughts on, if you'd like to, to join, let me know, and I can send a calendar invite your way. But Planning Policy Commission is tomorrow night. We already have Councilmember Hunt, who's going to be attending on Council's behalf, so thank you for that. I have a calendar invite ready to go, Councilmember Hunt. Transportation Advisory Board is this Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Tibbetts Creek. The Civil Service Commission's on this Thursday, if you have an interest in that. And then next, let's see, what is that? Next Thursday is the Cemetery Board. And those are the next two weeks, a board and commission meeting. So if you have any interest in doing Planning Policy, Transportation Advisory Board, Civil Service or Cemetery Board, just let me know. Thanks.
Great. And I will just take a moment, I was looking over kind of future calendar ideas. I want to make sure that everybody on Council knows about the Summer Employee Recognition Event, or SEER, which is on July 20th, from 11:00 AM to 3:00 PM. Really fun event. Would love to see everybody there, come out and enjoy hot dogs and beach and all of that. Fun idea. So I think we are probably at this point good, so very much appreciate everyone. I will call the meeting adjourned at 8:56 PM. Thank you.